Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Rzika.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence for her reception. Thank you. Please be seated. Start out tonight as we always do with our public to be heard. Read our rules and regulations.
Sure. At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of our meeting. As a reminder, and pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. And all speakers before council should observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, does anyone desire to be heard? Connie, please.
Good evening. I'm Connie Riley from the Downtown Business Improvement District at 128 Genesee. We are here for our third visit about the parking till 9:00 p.m., so I'm hoping to -- I am going to be here till the end of the meeting to watch the vote on that, so. At your seats, I placed a small packet. I have 790 signatures and petitions here against the 9:00 p.m. parking. There's also a letter of support against the 9:00 p.m. parking from Magvanik at the Tourism Office and the Tourism Board. There's also a letter of support against the 9:00 p.m. parking from Souls and Dunn. There's also an email from the Contagolia Firm. And I also included the opinion from the Citizen last Sunday, maybe two Sundays ago, if you had not seen that, so. So, thank you for your consideration of everyone who has come to speak, and I guess we'll let the night proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening?
Hello. My name is Christina Rusin, and I currently reside at 2797 Center Road, Cipio Center. But I am employed by the Kuga County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a member of the Ignite Young Professionals Group here in Auburn. And I'd like to just speak on behalf of the parking after 9:00 p.m., until 9:00 p.m. And I would just like to say I strongly urge you to vote against this change. And as personally, I would like to see this not happen. I'm speaking on behalf of young professionals and trying to draw our young professionals down to downtown. I think it would strongly hurt the local businesses downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Latimore.
Legislature Latimore from the 13th District, which represents the downtown area. I too am against any charges for night parking. I was against the kiosks when I sat on this proud board, and I think it's important that we continue the efforts downtown. It was a long time in planning, and then the actual impetus, the movement that's been going on down there, so I wouldn't want to see anything decrease from that. And keep up the good work, and we'll see you later.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I just want to speak briefly. I spoke a couple of weeks ago about this situation, but I think -- oh, I'm sorry. To start off, I'm Mike Spino, Spino Music, 41 Lake Ave here in Auburn. And I think the most important thing, we've been dealing with parking our whole time in downtown. It's not the retail part of it, but I think it's things like what goes on on our second floor and on a lot of the second floors, and of course, the influx of the new restaurants. To put all that money in the properties downtown, to make it the center of the community, which downtown is, not so much myself, but Mesa Grande, Wally's, probably Parker's to a certain extent, any of the diners, Hunter's Diner, they rely solely on street parking, especially with the protection that Dunkin' Donuts gives their, fortunately, their own private parking. So for those businesses to do any business at all, when you can drive anywhere on Grand Avenue and eat and park for free, I just don't see how this is going to be beneficial. And with the upcoming holiday season, the sales tax revenue generated alone, I think is going to make a big difference, but if you discourage that revenue from the sales tax, which prepared food, restaurants-based sales tax, I think it's going to be pretty detrimental to Auburn and the traffic downtown. The other thing, when Auburn was vital, not revitalized, the city was always good enough to make the month of December a month of free parking. And that's really being cooperative with the merchants downtown. Nobody's asking for that anymore, but that was only a few short years ago that that happened. So I truly beg you to please vote down this proposition for parking. I have tenants, I have a dance center on the second floor, we have Kiuga Valley Metal Railroad Club, a bunch of retired guys that just come down and hang out and play their hobby, Randy Musidola's drum studio, Lori Rhodes piano studio, and Jim in Arsdale's guitar studio. All this business happens when the kids get out of school. And then, of course, my apartments, those people come home from work at 6:00. So to have to worry about feeding a meter all week, well, every day but Sunday, that's going to be pretty rough to keep those apartments vacated, or not vacated. So I hope you consider voting this down for reasons. I think throwing nickels and dimes at dollar problems doesn't get the job done. I just think it's going to drive away more business, and maybe there'll be no retail spots left downtown anymore. But thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else this evening? You will close the public to be heard. We have fire prevention month proclamation.
That's for you. From the office of the mayor, whereas the City of Auburn is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to over 370,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 156,000 annually between 2007 and 2011, and whereas two of every five home fires starts in the kitchen, and whereas unattended equipment was a factor in one-third of the reported cooking fires, 57% of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, and whereas children under age, under five, face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire, and whereas the City of Auburn residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and the City of Auburn first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas the City of Auburn residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge the people of Auburn to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2013, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Auburn Fire and Emergency Services.
With us tonight is Fire Chief Diger. Chief, if you'd meet me at the podium here and say a few words, please.
Thanks. I'll just take a couple of moments here to talk about Fire Prevention Week, and thank you, Debbie, for getting the new fire prevention stuff up on the city fire department's webpage. It can be accessed through the city website itself. That should be all updated with some new information on Fire Prevention Week, Fire Prevention Month, and if you've not looked at that, there's a lot of home safety and fire prevention, home safety tips on various subjects. Fire Prevention Week is normally recognized in the week of October 6th through 12th of October. It's the anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire of 1871 that basically destroyed the city of Chicago, left over 100,000 people homeless, and 300 folks perished in that fire. This year's the focus nationally on Fire Prevention Month, and nationally, I mean, in the United States and Canada both recognize Fire Prevention Month in October at the same time, is kitchen fires, which in a lot of cases, to folks that aren't involved with the fire service, may seem like a relatively minor thing, but all of our fires typically start as a minor issue and grow from there. Locally, some kitchen fires of great significance. Two years ago, two people lost their lives in Greenview Circle Fire. A two-year-old little girl was one of those folks, and that was a fire that started in the kitchen, a relatively minor fire in a kitchen area. Most recently, the Latimore Hall Fire, which by all accounts would be considered a relatively minor fire, has displaced roughly 50 students for a period of time while that business, that facility rebuilt. So these things can have, and in fact, dramatic effect on people's lives and their families, and also even on our local economy, and in this case, 50 students attending Kuga Community College. So please keep those things in mind with that. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, Chief. So we have a presentation about United Way, and with us tonight is Jim Dabo. For those that don't know, Jim, you're about to have a great experience in life. He's quite a gentleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for your time tonight. I'm Jim Dabo, and I'm here with the United Way tonight. I'm also resident of the city and owner of Mesa Grande. So you can all relax because I'm not going to talk about parking tonight, and I'm not going to talk about performing arts centers. I'm not going to talk about budgets or cogeneration at the landfill. I promise. What I'm going to talk about tonight, I think you can all vote yes on with a clean conscience. I'm here to tell you about this year's United Way campaign and why I'm the campaign chair this year. I'm very proud, and I know I only have a few minutes, I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I'm very excited and proud to be this year's campaign chair for the United Way. They do a lot of wonderful work right here in Kuga County. They support over 20 agencies that support over 41 human service programs that help people from birth to end of life, help them gain independence, dignity, and help when they need it the most. I got roped into doing this this year. I'm glad to be doing it, but because some of you may not know this, but in 1973, 40 years ago, I was the poster child for United Way of Kuga County, and I don't remember much about that year. As I like to say, all I had to do in 1973 was show up and look cute. This year, I've got to show up, look cute, and do all the talking, and I'm not sure how I'm doing, but I'm doing my best. And, you know, I don't remember a lot about 1973, but I did some research recently, and it turns out in 1973, we were winding down an unpopular war in Vietnam, and there were Watergate hearings starting in the Senate, so people were pretty frustrated and disillusioned with their government. The economy was kind of a mess. Inflation was 6.6%. Gas prices and oil prices rose 200% in a short period because of unrest in the Middle East. So I'm guessing this year's campaign should go a lot more smoothly because we've got nothing like that going on this year. So that's the good news. But the real reason I'm taking time out of, again, many of you know I own Mesa Grande. It's a relatively young business, but I'm happy to say three years old and successful. And, you know, we've been a success here in the community. We've got six full-time people working for us and about seven or eight part-time people at any point in time. We generate a pretty good amount of sales tax here locally, sales tax revenue, and but I'm not here to talk about Mesa Grande, but I just, I say a little bit about that because I think it's a yardstick by which we can, you know, measure the success I've been fortunate to have, and things could have gone very differently for me. You know, when my parents got the diagnosis that I had cerebral palsy, excuse me, they were told I would probably not walk or talk, and that must have been pretty devastating for them. As a dad myself, I can really relate, and they were told that I would need a lot of physical therapy, three, four times a week. And if I, if they had had to drag me to Syracuse or Rochester three, four times a week, I may not have gotten the help I needed or enough of it, but because we have great facilities like the John Gaver Center here in Auburn and Kuga County, in part because of support from the United Way, I was able to get that right here at home. But I'm here because in 1973, in rooms just like this all over the county, the folks who did do the talking that year asked the same question I'm going around asking people they were asked to give, and they were, and they probably went through the same thought process that people go through today. I work hard for my money. Is this really what I want to do with my money? Is this the way I want to give? Is it going to be used in the right way, and are we going to have outcomes? Is there going to be success? And if I could go back in time and show those people the success that I became and thank them each personally for deciding to give, I would do that, but I don't have a time machine, so this is my way of saying thanks to all those people. And the message I'm taking out this year to the people who are going through that same consideration is that I believe that if they choose to give, that 10 or 20 or 30 or 40 years from now, they'll meet somebody who's a dad, a business owner, a community leader, who will thank them and say, "Thank you. You did the right thing. You gave, I got the help I needed when I needed it, and now I can give back." So thank you very much. Thanks for your support of the campaign this year.
As I said, Jim is quite an individual if you hadn't heard him speak before. Jim, we were not going to limit you to three minutes, but I wasn't going to tell you that at the beginning, so you didn't find, so thank you. Public announcements.
I have one. The Planning Department asks that we announce that there will be an ADA meeting this Monday at 7, Monday, October 7th, at 5:00 p.m. here in city council chambers. That's it.
Thank you. City managers report.
A few things, Mayor. The New York State Department of Transportation frequently comes out and does some inspections. They inspected one of our bridges, the North Division Street Bridge, and they red-flagged it. What that means is we're going to have to have that inspected. It's likely there'll be some load limits posted for that bridge, and it is in our capital plan that the council's adopted for replacement in 2015, 2016. It is a project that should be eligible for 95% funding, so. The Franklin Street Waterline Project is nearing commencement of construction. We'll be doing some outreach, especially to the residents along the street, but we're also outreach-ing with press releases, working with the clerk's office on, so that people who commute up and down Franklin will know what's happening and when it's happening. But we expect to see activity in the street in November. Right now, the contractor is waiting for valves to be delivered, and pipe is being stockpiled as we, as we speak. And in addition, on the North Division Street dam itself, that turbine's been pulled, the repairs have been made, and it's been reinstalled, and we're waiting for water levels to come up to start operation and generation of power at that project again. You'll recall, it's been out of service for a number of months due to some equipment failures. That's it.
Mayor, I just had one question. Doug, when, I know it's a little early on, but when we're considering to work on a North Division Street Bridge, is there any way of looking at the realignment of that intersection down there so that, you know, it's not such a congested problem area to the community?
Good point, Counselor. Yes, that is a planned realignment anyway, and so the two projects kind of will mesh together and we'll get that straightened out at the same time.
Very good. Thank you. Petitions and communications?
None.
Seeker Review Act, Seeker Resolution Number 116 of 2013, Determining a Type II Action Related to the Purchase of Equipment for the Public Works Department. We have it found, Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Excuse me. Seeker Resolution Number 116 of 2013 by Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo. Whereas the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, is considering undertaking the purchase of equipment and apparatus for the Public Works Department to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city roadways and other city improvements, including two park and median mowers, and a loader, backhoe, a tractor, a street sweeper, and two dump trucks. And whereas the project consists of the purchase of equipment and apparatus, and whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, as amended, the city desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulations with respect to the project. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, as follows. One, the project constitutes a Type II action under Seeker, and no further action under the Seeker Act and the regulation is required. Two, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Question.
Yes, regarding the line in regards, whereas the project consists of purchase, I do think that we should leave that open for lease, or maybe just put acquire use of, because we may decide that it may be more cost-effective for a lease versus a purchase. Just a language thing.
Mr. Ross.
Well, the seeker really, the end result is securing or acquiring equipment is securing or acquiring equipment. So I don't think it makes a difference.
Maybe in a bond ordinance.
Well, the bond ordinance will have an amount that would be allocated, and again, the expenditure, you don't have to spend all the money. Find other avenues. I don't believe that a -- invalidate the bonding.
I wouldn't think so, but I mean, like I say, this is a resolution. We're saying we're going to purchase it, you know.
Yeah, I, that's for seeker purposes again, and it doesn't.
-- movements, the cost of which is more than $15,000 and less than $30,000, including two park and median mowers at an estimated cost not to exceed $40,000. B, machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance costing $30,000 or more. The purchase of machinery and apparatus to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city roadways and other city improvements, the cost of which is $30,000 or more, including a loader, backhoe, a tractor, a street sweeper, and two dump trucks at an estimated cost not to exceed $705,000. And Section 13, this ordinance is not subject to a mandatory or permissive referendum. Section 14, the council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditure authorized by this ordinance. Section 15, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Discussion, Counsel. Counselor Camardo.
Mr. Talbot is here this evening. I asked week about the possibility of leasing some equipment. Before we move ahead with purchase of this, I think you said you had some different options to go over with us, Mike.
Yeah, and talking with our, first of all, thanks for considering this because it's something that's much needed. Talking with our finance office and going over the numbers and talking with the city manager, at this point, what, what makes sense, I think, is to lease the street sweeper, simply because we know to rent one how much that costs, and I think we're all in agreement. I think it's nice that there's a lot of downtown business owners, and I know everyone can tell the difference when the streets are swept. The math does work on that. Now, what I think we need to do, and I'll be the first one, I think what this, what we have done a poor job on is probably maintaining a good inventory of equipment. For whatever reasons, it really doesn't matter at this point, but we're, we're at a point now where I think this is a good starting point to really develop a good fleet management plan. That's not just limited to Public Works, but all of our departments, because I know when, you know, Public Works alone, you know, our vehicle maintenance repair accounts from all the different departments we have is, you know, close to $180,000. And what we're going to do as we update is hopefully be able to see some considerable, you know, reductions in those areas. So, but it does, I think it does make sense to lease the sweeper. The other ones, you know, Bob seemed to think at this point, probably bonding, the only, you know, you'd have closing costs, of course, which you don't have with a lease, but I think the, regardless of which way we finance, the, the important part is when the term is up, and I think what we also need to do is really concentrate if we, if and when we do bond for the equipment, that the bond is, you know, it's through the life of the equipment and not more. And there's guidelines to go by on that also, because I think in the past, what's happened is we, our bonding terms are longer than the actual life of the equipment, and obviously we don't want to do that.
So how do we move ahead with leasing it and with this bond? You're going to, we're going to go ahead with the bond authorization and then take one of these out of the bond authorization to pay for a lease?
What we'd recommend, because we'll come back to the council for the equipment itself. So we come back with the lease for a motor sweeper and then the purchase of the other equipment. So if you approve this in its current form, I think we'd be in good shape. We just wouldn't include the sweeper in the purchase. This doesn't obligate us to buy this equipment. It authorizes us to do it. So with coming back to the council, as, as we come up with these projects, you would have the final say on leasing versus purchase.
And just so everybody knows, how long is this bond going to be issued for, Doug?
Were we looking at 10 or 15 years?
Well, if I can add something, that's what I talked with Bob about earlier today, and I believe with, and Christina, you might know more than I, but I know you do on this and the financing end of it, but I believe you can have different terms for the different pieces of equipment. Isn't that correct? So if we, if we project using state guidelines, a truck is going to a useful life of eight years, that's what that portion of that expense for that bond will be for eight years. If it's six years, it'll be six. If it's, they project 10 years, you know, 10 years for that cost of that.
So you're going to break down each piece of equipment accordingly with the cost?
And that, and that payment schedule's based on that useful life.
And we're just approving an aggregate of the total amount?
Right. But that total amount's going to be broken down into different terms.
And we'll see this once, once you come forward with that, those breakdowns.
Yeah. Well, it's been so long since we bought equipment, I guess that's a, yeah, I think that's what we'll, what we'll do.
Mike, can you purchase them off a state bid?
Yeah.
Saving the bond, or the bid process?
Right. And we've already done our homework. There are, you know, we, we have a good idea, you know, the mechanics have been involved, our drivers have been involved. I get input from everybody of what they'd like to see, and believe me, it's, it's not going to be, you know, the Taj Mahal. It's going to be what we need. It's going to provide the most efficient means for us to do our jobs.
Now, Mike, I talked to former superintendent Jerry in the JBC, the loader and the backhoe, and what he had told me is we were in a, we bought it with a buyout option after that first year instead of a lease deal. It seemed to work out really well. So if you can look into that.
I think what's important also is that we look at it when these terms are up, regardless of whether we lease or bond, that we really, as a group, need to make our decision to, and commit ourselves to updating our fleet more often and being a little bit more savvy maybe on when to get rid of something.
Thank you, Mike.
Doug, if the --
Doug, if there is any kind of surplus on this bond, how is that going to be handled?
Surplus in terms of, we'll only issue the debt that we need to issue.
Okay. All right, so it's, it's not...
That's how we would approach that.
This isn't up to, right?
Mr. Rossi, because this is a bond, we need a super majority. Am I correct before votes?
Yes.
All right, Counsel. Clerk, if you call the roll.
We only have three places on here, I guess.
It's on the back. We're trying to save paper.
It is?
Oh, it isn't? You did double sided, I thought. I didn't. Well, I can get you copies afterwards, but we're trying to save paper. The back says, Counselor Razika, Mayor Quill, carried and adopted.
Cut me out again.
No, you're in there.
You're the front page, Counsel. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
This will be the first reading of Ordinance Number eleven of 2013, amending Chapter two thirteen, start again, amending Chapter two thirteen, nuisances of the Code of the City of Auburn.
First reading.
Please.
Whereas, the City of Auburn, New York has previously enacted Chapter two thirteen of the municipal code entitled nuisances, and an amendment known as Ordinance eleven of 2010. And whereas, there is contained in this chapter, two thirteen legislative findings, definitions, and enforcement procedures regarding the abatement of nuisances within the City of Auburn. And whereas, the City of Auburn City Council continues to be desirous of providing more efficient regulations in abatement of nuisances within the City of Auburn, and is desirous of implementing the procedures set forth in said chapter in order to provide for the elimination of public nuisances. And whereas, the Auburn City Council has become aware of situations where rodent infestation has been allowed to occur, and in a certain, in certain real properties, with the landlord failing to take any reasonable measures to abate said rodent infestation. Now therefore be it ordained that, one, Section two thirteen dash three definitions, public nuisance, Section D miscellaneous of the City, Auburn City Code, is hereby amended to include the following language. Section four permitting situations or conditions which allow rodents or other such living pests to live on or in real property, and/or failing to take reasonable steps to abate, eliminate, and/or exterminate rodents and/or other such living pests, once the landlord, or occupant, or user of such real property becomes aware, or should have known, of the existence of such rodents and living pests. It is the intention of this law to declare rodent infestation as a public nuisance, and to hold those responsible, including but not limited to landlords responsible. And be it further ordained that the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that this ordinance shall take effect upon publication.
We sponsored this, I sponsored this legislation about two years ago, John, was it? We got the nuisance law?
Yeah.
About two years. One thing that we did omit were rodents. I do have a question, though. Living pests, could that mean spouses, or my wife might want that, so she might like this part.
I started that, and I think we're going to add some different language, to probably add vermin rather than living pests. Keep the human element out of it.
Okay. My wife's a little excited. But anyhow, this is something that's passed due, and we've, we've talked to, I'm sure all of us have, I've talked to one particular wrestling that who's been dealing with this on a consistent basis. But throughout the years, I've had numerous conversations with business owners and homeowners who have to live, or live next door to such horrendous conditions. So, I think it's glad, I'm finally glad that we are addressing this. But John, my question is, what teeth do we have in regards to enforcing this?
Well, there, let me just expand on that a little bit. This type of provision is in the code and the housing standards. It's not exactly the same as this provision, but that would have caused going to court citations, waiting for the owners or the occupants to answer, which usually runs into a long period of time. By placing this in the nuisance ordinance, it can be brought before the committee, which consists of the fire chief, police chief, and city manager. And they can take summary action, including, part of their powers, to revoke certificates of occupancy, to have the building or, or the living quarters condemned, so that no occupancy can occur. It could end up for a period of time, six months or so, or permanently. So, all of the provisions, enforcement provisions in the nuisance law will apply to this provision. And it'll be quicker, and we'll have all the teeth that you need.
Okay. The key point, though, is we're going to be able to address this in a much quicker fashion.
No question. That's, that's the key portion of it.
And we can act unilaterally, instead of having to wait through the judicial system?
Correct.
That, Counsel?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor, I caught myself speeding. We did not approve the meeting minutes from September twelfth. Was waiting to see who caught up with me, but no one, everyone was so glad to hear Jim DeDabo speak instead of myself, so. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September twelfth, 2013. We have a sponsor, Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Greeney. No discussion? Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Land Acquisition Resolution Number 115 of 2013, accepting dedication of streets situated in Eastside Heights subdivision. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Razika, seconded by Counselor Greeney.
Land Acquisition Resolution Number 115 of 2013 by Counselor Razika, seconded by Counselor Greeney, whereas PMB Vitale Realty LLC, referred to as the dedicator, has offered to dedicate certain property to the City of Auburn for street purposes. And whereas, such property is particularly described in Schedule A, which is attached heretofore and made a part hereof. And whereas, such offered dedication is made in support of the dedicator's final approval of the subdivision of certain property described in Schedule A, and being known as Eastside Heights. And whereas, the names of the streets offered for dedication are Vitale Drive, which is indicated as Street A, set forth on the approved subdivision plat, approved by the Auburn City Planning Board, which extends from the southerly entrance of Eastside Heights, extending in an easterly and northerly direction, and Karpinski Drive designated as Street B, on said subdivision plat, extending from the northern entrance from Prospect Street to a cul-de-sac on the northerly portion of the subdivision. And whereas, the streets offered for dedication have been partially improved, and final improvements will be made by the dedicator. And whereas, the property and streets described in the plat, and in the description attached heretofore as Schedule A, is in the best interest of the City of Auburn. Now therefore be it resolved by the Auburn City Council, that the dedication and acceptance of a deed from PMV Vitale Realty LLC, as it is particularly described in Schedule A, attached heretofore and made a part hereof, and on the plat of subdivision, as recorded in the Cuba County Clerk's Office in the Book of Deeds, is accepted as public streets by the City of Auburn, New York, and that said streets shall be respectively known as Vitale Drive and Karpinski Drive.
Your Honor, if I just may, correct the blanks that are in the resolution. Originally, the information that I received was that the plat, the map itself was in deed books. It is not. Maps are filed in a different fashion in the clerk's office. And I would ask that we would amend the last portion of the resolution to strike out book and insert map, strike out of deeds, and the map designation is thirteen dash one eleven.
One three dash one one one?
Correct.
We have a motion from the floor for the amendment.
I'll make the motion to amend.
To sponsor it, I think, Counsel.
Counselor Greeney?
Greeney, seconded by Counselor Razika for the amendment.
Okay.
Discussion in that part, gentlemen. I'll call the roll in regards to the amendment, if you would, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
All right.
No.
All right.
Amended.
Amended.
There's another amendment. I think we need to put in the as-bills.
I was, I was just consulting with Corporation Counsel about that. What we, what we want to be sure that we get are record drawings showing where the underground utilities are located, so as we accept these streets for maintenance, our field crews will know where to look for valves and connection points.
So, I want to make amendment to add the as-bills.
Yes, that's, that's fine. I didn't have that information.
I'll second that amendment.
What, what, we didn't get what the motion was, so.
Wanted to add the, add as-bills from the builders, the developer, for the map.
Just write as, add the as-bills.
Mr. Rossi, agree with that language?
Are you agree with that?
Yeah. Mr. Lay is here, who represents the developers. And if you want to comment on that, Andy, and just give us your thoughts and...
If you'll stay right at the microphone, so they could hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm here on behalf of PMB Vitale, the dedicators in this case. We have no objection to providing as-bills of the utilities that would be underneath the streets that are to be dedicated in this regard, to assist your highway crews in future maintenance and repairs as needed.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. And also, as you may have seen in the memorandum, the developers have filed a performance bond, so that they will live up to all of the terms of the development and the improvements in both the streets, sidewalks, and whatever, curbing. But we can add that portion to the end of the resolution. You want to state it again, Andy, just what you're comfortable with as far as providing the as-bills?
We are, we are in agreement that the dedicator will provide as-built drawings of the utilities underlying the dedicated streets upon completion, to help facilitate city highway maintenance and repair activities in the future.
You agree with that, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, that's fine.
Counselor Greeney, want to sponsor that?
Yes.
Amendment, please. Is there a second?
Correct.
Counselor Razika would be a second on that.
Okay.
Discussion on the amendment. If you'll call the roll in regards to the amendment, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Amended.
Any other, Counsel, any other?
My clients could not appear tonight, but they asked me to convey their sincere thanks to Counsel, to City Manager Selby, and Counselor Rossi, for helping to facilitate this exciting new residential growth within the city limits. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Lay.
How much is the performance bond for?
Excuse me, I believe it's seventy-five thousand.
Is that enough to cover our costs in case?
The engineers accepted that.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, thank you.
Further discussion in regards to Resolution Number 115? Clerk, if you call the roll then, please.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Counsel Resolution Number 117 of 2013, applying for fiscal year 2013 staffing for adequate fire and emergency grants for the Auburn Fire Department. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by, second, no second? I'll second it for discussion.
Counsel Resolution Number 117 of 2013 by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Mayor Quill, whereas a request was submitted to the U.S. Federal Emergency Management Agency Staffing for, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, SAFER, grant to assist the City of Auburn Fire Department to cover expenses associated with the hiring of firefighters. And whereas, the U.S. FEMA SAFER Grant provides funding directly to the fire departments to ensure that they have adequate personnel to respond to and safely perform at incident scenes, and provide protection from fire and fire-related hazards for their communities. And whereas, the City of Auburn Fire Department is eligible for U.S. FEMA SAFER Grant funding due to the fire department position layoffs as part of the fiscal year 2013-14 city budget. And whereas, the proposed SAFER Grant would restore ten firefighter positions for a two-year period, and cover allowable costs under the hiring of firefighters category. And whereas, U.S. FEMA is requesting the city provide a letter of commitment to the terms and conditions of the SAFER Grant should each, should such a grant be awarded. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, one, that the mayor or authorized representative is authorized to submit a letter of commitment to U.S. FEMA outlining a clear understanding of the terms and conditions of a fiscal year 2013 SAFER Grant. Three, if awarded, grant funds that the mayor or authorized representative, representative is authorized to accept grant funding from the U.S. Federal Emergency Management Agency Staffing for Adequate Fire Emergency Response Grant Program, to execute the grant contract agreement, as well as any reimbursement forms or other necessary documents to complete the project. Three, that the city comptroller's office is authorized and directed to create and amend the fiscal year 2013-14 Auburn Fire Department budget by recognizing grant revenue, and to increase expense authorization to the fire department in that grant about. And number four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
City manager, anything you'd like to add in regards to this?
Mayor, it's fairly self-explanatory. It's a federal program to help cities out who have, for financial reasons, have had to reduce their fire department staffing. Chief DeGard is here. He's studied on this, and if there are any questions, I'm sure he's capable of answering them.
Doug, exactly what are the terms and conditions?
If I can defer to the chief, I could tell you, but I think he can give you more detail.
The performance period of the grant is two years from the, basically ninety days from the award of the grant, if the grant is awarded. Again, this is just the application process. Upon receipt of award, we have ninety days to complete certain aspects of hiring, and then there's a two-year performance period after that. During that two-year performance period, all the costs are covered, the major costs, the salary, the benefits package, the pension contributions, all that has been taken into account as part of the application package. We worked on that with Lisa Green, to make sure those figures were as accurate as possible. In the past, individuals that were rehired that were veterans were granted an extension out to three years, fully funded. We're not sure if that will happen again this year. There are some indications that that may happen. In the past, what they've done, they've awarded the grants, and then determined if there were veterans involved.
Chief, so everything is paid for, basically?
Everything is paid for, except an annual physical.
But at, and at the end of the two years, there's no...
No. This grant program has been in effect for roughly ten years. I think, Mayor, you were involved with this in the startup roughly ten years ago, I think.
Approximately.
And in the early stages, the, the grant would diminish over time, and the city was left on the hook for those, those funds to maintain those positions over the course of time. That was not sustainable for many municipalities, so the federal government has eliminated that as one of the conditions.
So, let me ask this then, and again, I'm all for a grant, as long as there's no strings attached. So, as we're doing with every department within the, within the functions of the city government, from planning to DPW, Police Department, on down, Fire Department, in these two years, would we be allowed to continue with the restructuring process? So, if that means reforming the department with potential layoffs next two years, can we do that, or does that prohibit us from doing that?
The, the grant is to maintain a certain level of staffing through the performance period of the grant. So, part of the stipulations would be that staffing would have to maintain a certain level through the performance period of the grant. There is a waiver application process that has been exercised by other local municipalities to allow them to reduce staffing through attrition during the performance period of the grant. So, that is a viable option during the...
Okay, this is my concern. My concern is, is that string that handcuffs us. So, what happens is, if we contend, if we commit to this for two years, what we're doing is, we're committing to restructure every other department except for... we're committing to restructure every other department except for the fire department.
Uh, it gives you, it also gives you time to restructure things in a way that doesn't have as dramatic of an impact. Uh, it gives us time to, to reposition things, realign things, realign contract language, things like that.
Well, I'm not going to support this because of that fact right there. I mean, it ties our hands. It ties future councils' hands, too. We cannot deviate from what I've read from these, these contracts. Other departments is our budget, woe gets worse and worse. We're going to have to take cuts on other departments, and your department's going to be free from cuts.
Well, the way I look at it is this is going to give us some time to sit down and look for cost savings, not only in the fire department, but every apartment, department across the board. And I think that's important, and we look at that, especially with the financial problems that were existing. But, um, I did not support cutting the positions in the fire department because I was worried about, number, number one was public safety. And the second thing I was concerned about was our cost exceeding some of the, some of the cost savings that were, we set out to do in the, in the first place. And I'm concerned about what the core costs that were, our legal costs that were, um, building up at the time. And secondly, um, what our overtime costs are going to cost us. So when you couple all that together, are we going to have a bigger bill for the taxpayers than we set out to be, to, to do originally? That's why I said right from the get-go, it needs to, we need to do an analytical approach to this and make sure that we know exactly what we're doing, how we're going to come up with cost savings. And there's certain language in contracts that we got to abide by. They're there. We need to, we need to abide by them. So I think this is going to give us a little bit better breathing room. I think this would be good. It's a million and a half dollars, uh, bringing, brought into the community. So I, I think that, uh, we should move forward in this area and at the same time, sit down, like I said, with the fire department and see what kind of cost savings we can come up with because our financial picture's not getting any better. It's going to get worse, unfortunately. Um, but these are the things that we need to start working with. Like I said, now with the, not only the fire department, but every department across the city.
Your life property, this, properly, this could increase the amount of savings that the city was originally looking for, that this council was originally looking for with, uh, contracts right at the moment being discussed. And the fact that we'd be at full staffing, that would help to drastically eliminate overtime. This would end up being a cost savings for the city.
But the key answer to overtime, and I, I know this is not something we can solve here, the key answer to overtime is the minimum manning. That's the key answer. All right? I mean, you get rid of the minimum manning, which several departments have done, not just in this state, but in this country. You get rid of the minimum manning issue, you don't have an overtime problem. Okay? And that's what it comes down to. And the fact is, is in two years from now, whatever council's sitting here is going to be faced with a two million dollar added to the, whatever deficit they'll be facing then. Because right now, you're facing, I mean, every, every department within City Hall has been looked at for not just two years, or three years, or four years, or five years, or ten years. Every department has had hits. Okay? Unfortunately, we had to make the, the cuts that we made in the, in the fire department. Safety has not been jeopardized. Our, our fleet of trucks have been manned. And the overtime cost, well, that's always been a problem with the Auburn Fire Department, has been overtime cost. That's been a serious problem due to the minimum manning requirement. A minimum manning requirement, which is this the only department that has that requirement. I mean, we have, uh, police, for example, that go eighteen to twenty thousand calls a year, and we have five guys on per shift, on average. Okay? Fire, we have about four thousand, maybe five thousand calls a year, and we have fourteen guys on shift. So we need to relook and rethink what we do think. The bottom line is, your house has a better chance of getting robbed than it does catching on fire. Okay? So we, we need to reorganize, restructure, and this prevents us from doing that. It prevents us from restructuring. And, and what it's going to do is going to make every other department pay for this, this coming budget year and the following budget years. That's what it will do. And the overtime costs, we have been assured by our labor attorney that we will win this in appeals court. So if we do do that, then the overtime cost is paid for by the binding.
And what happens if it doesn't?
Counselor, you can't, what if anything? You got to challenge it. Because you know what? If you sit back and do nothing, you end up with what we have now, the status quo.
I'm not saying sitting back, but I think we should do it in an analytical way, and that's by sitting down with the unions and, and working out our problems. We're all part of the same community. We need to work on it. It needs to happen.
Counselor has been there, done that, and look where it is.
Well, we need to keep working on it. And I think not only with the fire department, but every department, we need to look at strong cost savings across the board.
Well, we've been aggressive with every department but this one.
Chief Doug, you're, you're, what you're asking or what you're applying for is X amount of dollars. And, and however you came up with them, I, I trust your judgment and the city managers. For a period of two years to pay for salaries and so forth with firefighters, replace salary. At the end of two years, if the city's financial house is not in any better order, they can be terminated, or laid off, excuse me, as they, as they are presently.
That's an accurate statement, as well as during the course, during the performance period of the grant, there can be adjustments made through a waiver process.
And it's a.
I'm not asking the council, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not asking the council to increase our budget line for anything. I'm not asking for an extra nickel. I'm asking for your approval to accept over one point five million dollars to put some folks back to work, to provide a service to the community, and, uh, bring some of our federal tax dollars back home.
And, and, if I may, Counselor, at the same time, the minimum staffing is, is stated here, is in litigation presently.
Correct.
So this has no bearing on, this is on the, uh, the overall staffing of the fire department?
Correct.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
Counselor, best.
Okay, go ahead.
But the thing is, though, the, the one point eight, or whatever that number is, two million dollars, it's going to affect somewhere else in the department. Because right now, Mike Talbot in the, in the, in the Department Public Works, um, Chief Nagel in the Police Department, Jenny Haynes in her department, Bill Lupien in his department, every department head now is going to have to look differently, okay, at their budgets. Because it, it's not going to be clear-cut spread if, guys, let's face it, we're facing the deficit this coming spring. No matter who's sitting at this table right here is facing some deficits. So they got to think long range, not short-term fixes, which are easy, okay, and very politically expedient. So you need to, we need to address a department that, very politically unpopular to address, that's very politically active. But the bottom line is, we need to do what's fiscally right. And this is what, we cannot afford to do this, because we're holding our hands.
Counselor, I don't see where you're tying it into the, the entire budget. That's where I'm, and with all respect, I just, I understand, following your reasoning.
Because they're going to have to find, if, if, if we go into this, let's say we come, this is not coming spring, this coming budget session.
Right.
There's going to have to be cuts made. You either have to raise taxes over the tax cap, or have tax cap, or make cuts. So if we accept this grant, fire department can't be touched.
How do you, I don't understand how you said.
With this grant money, you accept this grant money, you can't make any, you can't make any cuts to the fire department.
You could, you could have waivers.
There's a waiver program, a waiver.
A waiver only through attrition for retirement, so. But to make any other cuts or restructuring of the department can't be done.
Can you explain that waiver situation once again, please?
There, there is an opportunity, uh, if you're awarded the grant, to apply for a waiver that will allow the department to, uh, minimize its, or, or lower, reduce its ranks through attrition during the performance period of the grant.
Attrition. Through attrition.
Attrition. Is there any other way of, of, um, looking for a waiver? It's got to be through attrition?
It would be through attrition, through the grant process.
Okay, so.
And how many retirements have you had recently? And what would you expect?
Recently, or a year, we've actually got, uh, the next two years, we've got a large group of people coming up. That would be eligible for retirement. We've got roughly twenty people in the next two years that will, will get into that position where they're eligible to retire.
So twenty people?
Well, it.
Are eligible. Doesn't mean they'll, doesn't necessarily.
So even if half of them retired, you'd still have this, this amount of people covered?
Right.
Yeah, like I. Say, to me, this. Clearly, um, fiscally, this is, to me, this is a bandaid. It's kicking the ball down the street for two years. We're, we're getting a bailout here for two years, and two years comes, if nothing's any better, then, then, then we go through the same level of pain again, the same exact thing. So what are we buying? We're buying basically ten positions for two years. Um, also, it's, as to, what, I, I think I heard from, from, uh, from Bill and, and Matt, it seems like it's tying our hands. We have to, we cannot do anything with staffing unless they decide to retire.
We're just going to put the burden on other departments to make cuts.
So, so if, yeah, if we're short, and then the other thing is, if, let's say minimum manning goes, we're going to have ten, ten extra people sitting around, what's this for, you know, like, if we don't need that many staffing because of manning numbers going down, what are we gaining?
Mr. Selby, you.
If I might suggest something. Chief, how long before we would know if, if we would be a recipient of the grant?
It could be anywhere from thirty to a hundred twenty days, roughly.
And if it's offered to us, could the council reject it?
I, I would say that, you know, this is, to move the, the grant through the process, to move it forward, as with anything, until it's, the final signature is on the paper and the check is cleared, that we've always would retain an opportunity to, to say that, you know, we've reconsidered, we've looked at the numbers. And, and again, in that period of time, even in that, that sixty, ninety days, um, I would use that as an opportunity to look at a complete package, including the collective bargaining agreements, uh, the budget as it stands now, where we think it's going to be, all of those things. I, I think it would be prudent to at least keep our foot in the door on this thing and sit at the table and work this out, try to work it out for everyone's benefit in the end.
But the way I see it, again, like I say, it's, there's a certain amount of rope here that's tying our hands, or eight, this council's hands, whoever it may be, if it stays as, stays as, is, or, or changes, for two, two additional years. It, during those two years, I don't see the economic situation improving that drastically. Uh, there's a, there's a huge amount of inertia here. It didn't take us, you know, a matter of, of eight years to get here. It took us a number of years to get here. So it's going to take us a number of years to get. Is, is, is a bit of a band-aid. I have a hard time saying that unless we have full control of our department, which means if we need to cut positions because of, of economics, that this is, is a, is an obstacle.
If I may add one suggestion, what about considering the, before the council actually accepts the grant, um, to come back with some kind of restructured bargaining unit agreement, restructuring would.
No, that doesn't work.
That would move us to where we've been trying to get to.
We get promises and we get no follow-through.
But, but the council wouldn't, wouldn't be accepting the money. It would be a conditional, you know, you're saying, let's go forward with the grant, but staff, if you, you know, unless you come back with something that looks good to us over the long term, as far as adjustments to how the, the department operates, you know, you don't have to accept the funds.
Why don't we put that language in this?
Why don't you give them the opportunity to go and. Talk to the, to the union? Why, why are you saying no? I don't understand that.
Because I, I, it's, it's going to tie our hands for two years.
No, he's not asking you to vote on it. He's, he's, he wants an opportunity to go talk to the, to the fire union about that before he's back.
Okay, then let's make a motion to table it.
But this, but this is the thing, any, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, go ahead, Counselor, please.
Now, this is the problem. There's, and let's just be honest. There's at least three counselors that had the political will, okay, to do something that's very difficult that councils for forty or thirty years have been unwilling to do. And that's address the minimum manning, address the fire department issues. All right? It's like trying to touch social security at the national level. Okay? It's not politically popular. But again, what's politically popular usually isn't what's fiscally right. So councils change. So I know right now, there's that three that's going to make a tough decision, really to go ahead and look at the whole picture of every department. We can't just focus in on one department. We have to focus in on the maintaining all the departments.
Counselor, I, I got to respond because you've made these comments in the past. I'm looking for the fiscal responsibility of the city. This reminds me about four years ago, or five years ago, when, um, the Civil Service Commission did not allow lateral transfers to the, to the fire department. Um, the council at that time, which you were part of, went out and did, did not have any hiring, and it cost the city probably five to six hundred thousand dollars in overtime costs.
For assistants chiefs.
These, these are the things that I'm concerned about in overall costs to the city. I'm not looking for any political plum on this. I'm looking at what's cost-effective to the City of Auburn, because everybody is suffering across the board. And when you go and tell the taxpayers, you got to raise their taxes because of problems that are existing in the city, I have a problem with that. I've made that very clear in the past. But I'm looking out for the fiscal responsibility of the city across the board.
Good. I am too. That's why I'm voting against this.
Well, I, again, like I said, my point, I, I'm seeing, I can see both sides very clearly. If, if it wasn't for that string that we can't reach, you know, we have to do it through attrition, which I can understand why they would put that in here, because that's the intention, is to add it. But to tie our hands for two years to a department and make them virtually untouchable, while every other department has to suffer, is just not fair.
Let's get back in about tying his hands, because I think that we're getting a little off the track here. Are you telling us that you can apply for a waiver and there's no minimum?
Attrition only.
You already asked that question.
One second. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask the question in a different manner so I get a full understanding of what's going on. Attrition only, and it states that there's, there's a minimum manning provision in that?
The grant is to, to maintain a, a, a minimum level of staffing during the performance period of the grant.
But they don't, they don't, they don't require you on what minimum manning is?
It may not, yes. It, it doesn't tie the staffing to a contractual minimum. That should probably be clarified.
Right.
That if the grant is awarded, representatives from FEMA and the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program and the Safer Grant Program will come in, work with city leadership, fire department leadership, to determine what the level of staffing will be maintained during the performance period of the grant.
Well, I, I think that piece of information needs to be here.
No. In other words, what that's saying is, is the council does not have the authority to address a city department, the fire department in this case, like it can all other departments.
Well, how do you know what they're going to, how, how, how do you know what they're going to tell you is minimum?
I'm not going to leave it up to FEMA. That's our responsibility.
But how, would, why don't you see what the recommendation was?
You don't know, so I'm going to, I'm going to start on the side of caution and be fiscally smart here.
I have, I, like I say, it, to me, it's, it's tying our hands. We have the, we should have control over our levels of, of, in a department, budgetary-wise. And this basically puts up a do-not-touch. You can't touch them unless somebody decides to retire. It's, it's, and, and what do we do? I mean, if we get into a fiscal crunch, who suffers? It's not this department.
Every other department.
It's everybody else. And every other department's been hit hard.
How long, how long before, I'm sorry, how long before this, this has to be?
I believe it is actually October ninth. That's why it was, uh, introduced to you last week in an email.
And if we, if we, um, if we said that we wanted to see what, um, you know, we could come up with, the manager could come up with, we have to vote on this and say, yes, we're going to accept it, and so on and so forth, before it's, uh, you know, put the grant through?
I don't know how good the possibility is that we could potentially get this extended a little bit, but that would put us behind the eight ball in the grant process, and we'd probably end up on the tail end of the grant process, which would mean, you know, maybe if there was a grant funds, uh, available at the end, after the grant funds had been dispersed to other departments throughout the country, that they may come back and, and reconsider at that point. Basically, all this is, it's a placeholder, Counsel. I would, I would say if you could look at it, at that, look at it as a placeholder that gives us an opportunity to look at it. You're not committing to accepting the grant funding at this point. You're not, you're not committing to all of those things. It allows us to move forward with the grant process. It gives us an opportunity between now and the possibility of receiving this grant, because it's not a guarantee at all, to discuss things and try to restructure.
I, I like, knowing the state of affairs in Washington, nothing is going to be acted on within the next thirty to ninety to a hundred and twenty days, to be quite honest, my own opinion. At the same time, I would like to see us. my own opinion. At the same time, I would like to see us give the chief this letter that he's desiring to move forward. We all realize that we're not happy about this. It's not the best scenario. But at the same time, down the road, there's, we're not obligated to accept it. And, and it just, it gives the chief some wiggle room to work with his people, the city manager, to work. At the same time, hopefully, we'll have a decision in regards to minimum staffing, and that's, I'm sincere about that.
I, I'd like to give it to him, too, to give ten guys their jobs back, that's for sure. But, the thing is, it would give council no wiggle room to make any decisions.
I, I disagree, Counsel, because we still have to accept the grant. So, we do have to, we would have that final say. And there's nothing guaranteeing that we would be picked or chosen to receive the grant.
Again, as past precedent has shown, these difficult decisions haven't been made by council, so.
It's a tough decision to give away two million dollars, too, so that's another way of looking at it, Counsel.
True.
You're, you're, you're very right, Mayor, but the awful thing is selling your soul. You're, you're giving away, you're giving away the right of this city to manage its staffing levels, and you're guarding, putting, essentially guarding a department that has only way you can change numbers there is by attrition. So, who's control, who's control of that department, then? It's no longer the city council.
I feel the council is feeling the look at, though. We do have the final say. There's no guarant, there's, excuse me, Counsel, there's no guarantee that we accept this.
Why?
And that is the final, and that is the final.
The thing is, what we're gaining here, what we're gaining here in jobs, we're losing in that department, and in this department, and in that department.
You're correct. But at the same time, they're bringing the money in to pay for those jobs.
And, and presently, we have enough manning to provide public safety.
Counsel, you're doing that through overtime right at the moment. I just wanna...
And you're gonna continue to do that?
And that goes back to my point. The main issue that needs to be addressed, so if we wanna solve the, the budget problem in overtime, is there needs to say, hey, let's get rid of the minimum manning.
And sit down and negotiate it out.
That's what we're doing now. That's what we're doing now.
And this'll give you some time to do it.
This has nothing to do with that.
All right. I, I can't, I can't do this.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney.
No.
Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Rezika.
No.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Table legislation, ordinance number nine of two thousand thirteen, pending chapter two eighty-five, vehicle and traffic sections two eighty-five dash ten, eleven, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-four. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, second by Counselor Rezika.
Um, I don't know where to start.
Mr. Rossi, where, clerk is kinda lost. Where do we start with the reading of this?
Well, let's, let's do something first. Let's, the original ordinance, as it was read a couple of weeks ago, contained provisions extending the parking hours up to nine P.M. I would ask that the council amend the current ordinance to eliminate section two eighty-five, sixteen, A1, which stated in effect municipal parking, metered parking, will be enforced from nine A.M. to nine P.M. So, I would like to see that eliminated, due to everything that the, I'm sure the council has heard, and I'm sure the council is of, of a mind to do that. The only other change that would be necessary is on page eleven, two eighty-five, nineteen, paragraph A, which may have also had the nine P.M. limitation in there, but it would now read, "The parking of vehicles is hereby prohibited for a period of time as hereafter designated from nine A.M. to five P.M., except Sundays." So, that, that would effectively keep the time limits exactly the same as they have been and are currently. There'd be no change.
I'll make a motion for that amendment.
Very well. Second, Counsel Rezika. Mr. Rossi, would you just give us a, a brief reading of, of your amendments, so we can...
I've got it.
Do you have them?
I've got it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've, we've done that.
We've done it.
And as far as the whole ordinance itself, I believe that it has been read and that the police department has explained the changes due to the fact that some schools are no longer in existence and other schools are in its place. And unless council wants a limited reading, I don't believe it's necessary, because it's been available and has been thoroughly read and researched by all parties.
Counsel, let's, does anyone desire the, the in-depth reading of the resolution?
No.
That was quack.
Just for clarification, John, the only point is in, is for the time changes, is paragraph two eighty-five dash nineteen?
Two eighty-five, it's on page six. Two eighty-five dash sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, I got it.
A1.
Very good.
And the other is page eleven, which is two eighty-five, nineteen, paragraph A.
So, this is a, a motion for amendment for those two articles. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney.
Yes.
Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Rezika.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Amended.
For the remainder of the ordinance, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just, you know, open this up and just cover the topic of the extended hours here. And, and because of the recent public feedback, you know, I do not support the extended parking enforcement hours, obviously. But I gotta comment, that these proposed actions were discussed on the floor in, in a public meeting during the budget meetings, prior to the adoption of the city budget. In all these public, during these talks, there's no public input on these regarded changes. Again, this was openly discussed during our budget meeting. And this budget was passed with, with this provision in it, with the intention to help pay for the fund stuff. I mean, that was what made us have that kind of inclination. This is such as downtown concerts, the hoops park events, the city beautification, and maybe even help offset some of the bid costs. Now, all merchants pay sales tax regardless if they own, rent, or lease parking spaces, or if they have to rely on municipal parking. They all still pay sales tax. But parking is a user-based fee, and that is needed to help offset the costs of this parking lot maintenance. Parking's free at the Plaza and at the mall because the property owners pay for the maintenance of these parking lots, from the rent they receive from their merchants, or if they are the property owners, the property lot maintenance comes right off their bottom line. The city merchants typically don't have lots or spaces, and the city provides this service. The parking lot maintenance includes snow removal for the street, spaces, and parking lots. Now, this obviously has to be done late at night, when the lots aren't, spaces aren't occupied, and this is all outside of normal working hours. This is overtime hours, and at overtime pay. So, that being said, I think we need the bid and the downtown merchants to work with the council to come up with a fair and equitable plan, to help not only cover the cost of parking spaces and the parking lot maintenance, but enhance the downtown experience here. I'd like to see some planning begin right away. So, you know, I gotta ask Connie if, if she could start the ball rolling, since she started this initial pushback, because we gotta have a parking plan in, in place that's gonna benefit, you know, the city, the downtown merchants, and the users. I mean, we just gotta have, this, this has been a chronic problem, and it's time to address it and get it done and solved. It's far too long.
Is it all right to speak?
Please, come, Connie, if you would. Connie, Connie, if you come up to the podium, please.
We have talked about this, Peter, and, yes, I made several suggestions the last two meetings about the public safety possibility of giving tickets out for that, and I, I am going to bring that back to the table. I have talked with merchants who are very willing to meet, and we understand the difficult situation. Parking has been a bane of all of our existences forever. And so, as I see it, we should get together, make a list of suggestions, and then ask for, to come to a work session, or ask for a meeting of you individually, because we can't really do it in a meeting of this venue.
No.
With a three-minute limit.
What I, what I really like to see is, like I say, we got lots that pretty much during the day are fairly vacant, because, of course, everyone's taking the on-street parking. So, these lots, regarding, you know, for the occupancy, and what we put into these lots, particularly the garage, are just not, just not cutting the mustard here. We're, it's, it's a net loss for the city. So, would the city taking on the burden? Pays for the parking in the city, whether they use it or not. Then, again, parking should be and is considered a user-based fee. So, granted, the city was, was formulated when cars weren't, weren't around, cars weren't a big issue. Of course, as things grew, that became the problem. So, and land is not available. The only way you can do it is tear it. I mean, you gotta, you know, such as the garage. So, if no one's gonna use the garage, then we're gonna have to do something to encourage garage use, because the garage can't be there left vacant and us pay for it. It makes no sense.
Right. It's not vacant, and I have said in my columns, I, we do, everyone in bid appreciates the city council's investment in the parking garage. And I have been encouraging people, and also the merchants, the businesses encourage people, doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, to use the garage. And it, it may seem like it's empty, but it isn't. I park in there every day. And that brings up a question, just so I am clear on it, is the, because we pay for the permit, you know, for a year, is the parking in the garage still staying as it is? It didn't go to the twenty-five cents?
I believe the metered section did.
There, there was no adjustment to the garage parking rates.
All right.
Pardon me?
The meter, the metered section is...
The meters have gone up, but the rest of the garage rates have remained the same.
Okay. So, we can still promote that that is a very exceptionally reasonable place to park?
Well, and, and the other thing is, and I'm sure you probably got this, is, this was from Pango. They, they came back with a, and they're coming back and telling us, hey, your park rate, parking rates are too cheap. They, they are actually suggesting here and advocating that we do change and review these rates. And again, since this is gonna affect everybody, I think we ought to have this involvement, go over, get buy-in from, from everyone, and, 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 you know, wrestle this bear and put it to bed.
Sure. Our parking rates per hour are still, even with that minute increase, are still very, very cheap. They're cheap. So, we would certainly, that's a better, I think, a better way to raise...
Connie, just, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Over here.
Gotcha.
If, some people always ask, ask me, free parking downtown. Explain why free parking is, is not a good idea.
It's a wonderful theory, concept, but in reality, human nature is that people who work downtown and own businesses downtown would certainly fill up the parking spaces. And certainly, I would do my best to not allow that to happen, but it's for turnover. We've got to have turnover for people who do come downtown to go to the restaurants, go to businesses. That's the main hang-up of, and as I pointed out, some of these cities that don't charge for parking do indeed. They have people that go around and, and chalk tires, and if people go over the two-hour limit, they get a ticket. And I don't think they're ten-dollar tickets. They're substantially more. But that's been one of the biggest problems, is people just don't move their cars if they're not really made to, so.
Well, it's, it's human nature that, and unfortunately, with the added of the car and, and conveniences in the lifestyle, wanna park as close as you can. All matter of individual convenience.
Sure.
You're not gonna change that, obviously. It, it's just gonna become, as things change, obviously, that's gonna become more and more of an issue, which is, which is why somehow or some way, some shape and form, we gotta move some of this into the lot, garages, in space.
Right.
You know, the, the quick business that's gonna result in, in, in good cash flows for everybody.
Sure.
So, these are the things that we really have to iron out with, with the, with this group. And in fact, we have a parking, we did formulate a parking for the alternate site. Parking. I think these individuals, group as well, should...
Yes. We'll, we'll be happy to do that, and I'd like to thank all of you for taking into consideration all of our concerns. Killing the nine P.M. parking.
We haven't voted yet, so hang on.
Oh, you haven't?
No, the amendment, the amendment took it out, so you don't, it's...
Mayor Quill.
So, again, I'm asking, we, we form a committee, and we... ...our suggestions, and then we get together with a group, all of you here, or how does...
I did. I'm sorry. Peter, what I... To work with the city manager, when you've come to that point, and then, and it would almost should be a, a work session for the entire council, so everyone has their thoughts.
But we need to focus, you know, it can't be traffic enforcement. It needs to focus solely on parking. This is the elephant in the room, part is parking.
Well, it is, but tra- traffic enforcement downtown, and all those points I brought up, are very important.
Understood.
Gary Wright left my office today, and, you know, our doors indented into the building, and a kid on a bicycle who was riding like the devil was after him almost knocked Gary over. Now, Gary's seven feet tall, and it took him by surprise. I mean, he, he said, wow, I almost got hit. So, these are very important issues, and I know it takes enforcement, but it's part of the whole package.
Yeah, but understand, we only have typically a five on patrol. It can't be all downtown.
I, oh, I don't want them all downtown. One on foot even. You know, texting, talking on the phone, people do it all the time. So, that's just something that...
Well, like I say, that's, that's something that absolutely has to be handled through the police chief, as far as that goes. Which is why, like I say, we should stick to the, to the parking alone is the, is the core issue. I mean, I can understand your sideline issue saying, well, this is another revenue stream, but the, to focus and, and keep focused on the parking issue, which, you know, the, the blinders have to be on strictly for parking.
Okay.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Further discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney.
Yes.
Counselor Camardo.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Aye.
Counselor Rezika.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
Now, you can say, congratulations, Counsel. Connie. Other business, counsel.
Mayor.
Counselor Smith.
Doug, next week for our work session, or John, do we have a large agenda?
I don't believe so.
No, we have a, we have a couple of reports. That's, that's the main core of the agenda right now.
Okay. If, if Mike Talbot's available, and just to give you a heads up what we're looking for, I, I like to bring back the discussion, the landfill, and I know we had some conversations yesterday, Doug. yesterday, Doug. The topics I'd like to discuss is a potential development of a site here in the city for our CND waste. That would be one. Looking at raising fees on out-of-town users. And three, limiting CND tonnage from outside of the city. Limiting the amount of construction, demolition debris from outside the city. And Doug, if you could, that draft that you sent me yesterday?
Yeah.
If we could have that for, for the viewers to see, for us to see on the screens?
Sure.
I wanna look at that one particular site that we were talking about, which, after looking at it, I don't know if it would be feasible for us to use for a CND site. And Mike, Doug will catch you up on what we're talking about, or I can just give you a call. But those are the key topics. Oh, I'm sorry. Also, monitoring, doing a better job of monitoring what we have coming into our landfill. I know that's been a topic of discussion recently as well. So I wanna hammer in on those four topics.
Counselor, did you say off-site disposal of demolition?
Yes, yeah, outside of our...
Our campus now.
Yeah. Well, not say outside our campus, but out of our landfill.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Out of the...
There was a specific site that might, where we think the...
Right at the landfill right now, out of the 275 acres there, there's somewhere that might be of interest. Is that...
Yeah, yes, or maybe somewhere else in the city that we're not thinking of that you might have.
Counselor, I'm not trying to pin you down. I just wasn't sure by...
No, no, absolutely. No, we just, we just wanna separate the CND from the municipal garbage.
And why doing this? I think it's so good that we start narrowing in on this because our time's limited at the landfill, unfortunately. Are we gonna look at how much extra space this would provide to the landfill, how much life we would be able to look at, you know, adding to the operation of that current cell? And if we're gonna limit just taking in local garbage and not looking for outside haulers, you know, the life expectancy, I think, would be a good topic to bring also to the table next week.
I think, yeah, we'll bring as much as we can. One, one problem I think we might have is trying to pull all the economics of each one, because as, you know, from past presentations, you can, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of facets to each of these. And I think this is a good starting point, like you said, Counselor, to make, and Counsel Rzika, you alluded to it last week, there, these discussions need to be had. And obviously, there's been a lot on everybody's agenda. It's probably a good time now, like Counsel Smith said, let's throw some of these out there, and at least maybe we could get a consensus of a direction of where we'd like to go.
And I say it a hundred times, it's sinful to see a cell that has two liners being filled with CND.
And again, like I said, as to reiterate what I said last week, we really need to plan, and we need to be proactive rather than reactive at the last minute. We've got a window of time to where we have, I'm gonna say landfill resource availability. We have to look towards that time of where we're not gonna have landfill resource availability and see what the ultimate solution, based on the best economic judgment we can have, as to which direction we go. I think we need to, you know, really start planning that now, rather than wait five or six years down the road in the future. I mean, the groundwork needs to be in place, just so we don't get caught with the, looking the other way.
I have just a couple of things.
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Counselor, you were all set?
No, I said one other one. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis's minutes that he brought to our attention on the, from the Housing Commission. The, the problem with the abandoned homes, and again, this is part of something we've started to address with Council. There's a number of properties within the city that have had a number of violations, the home improvement of properties. But I guess my question is, with the, with the new actions that we have taken, when can we start seeing the fruits of that legislation in addressing these abandoned homes? And I think maybe, Norm, if you have a list of, any particular list that people are bringing to you, maybe we could start there with those homes. Okay. Because I think we need to address, because you guys do put the time and effort, and it's, it's an issue that every citizen wants to see fixed.
Good, Counselor.
I'll stop. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Camardo.
John, I know that Ada's meeting this week, and you wrote to them in the past about having the Council have oversight on the pilots. Is it possible that you can get a letter out to them and ask them if they would respectfully vote on that or act on that request, please?
Sure.
Second thing I had, Doug, we talked about this last couple of weeks, and I know Counsel Smith had a deadline of September, talking about reorganization. I think if we could bring that back to the table, I think it's important that we start looking at that again. I know you provided the documents on the budget. We need to start spending some time on the budget process and looking at reorganization.
Yeah, and as I said last week, I mean, we've, we pretty much have the financial, finance departments out. We're just waiting for civil service to be open again. They've been closed the month of October, so I know that probably puts us behind the eight ball. But if we could, as I said last week, let's pick a department, and so we can just set another deadline for that department. So I don't know if anyone has, maybe by next week, for our work session, we can address, give to Doug a specific department. You know, Mike, when I met with...
Diana?
Diana, thank you, in the summer. I think those are, that's probably a group that would be better fit for the larger departments. And you and I both discussed that.
We talked about that two weeks ago and talked about planning being first.
We're planning, we can...
That was my understanding, too.
Having planning, okay, that's fine.
That was my understanding.
And the thing is, Doug, is the ad or advertisement for this position for the financial, I'm gonna call it comptroller, is that being held up for this because of the civil service classification?
Yes. What I'm considering doing is to bring forward to the Council just the position of Assistant City Manager, which is in the charter. It, in talking to civil service, it's, goes through the process, but it's likely to come back. And basically, because it's a policy-level position, reports directly to me, has confidentiality and all of that associated with it, would be a position that we, hopefully, the Council could create. We could recruit for that with a specialty in financial management. That person could become our CFO and, in essence, replace the comptroller position. The other position would have to go through civil service to be modified.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that we should, you know, basically focus in on the, on the financial aspects of the, of this position. That's extremely crucial for the operation of the city as, as a municipality. I mean, we need to have that level of control. I'm sure the finance department would certainly enjoy a certain level of stability there with someone that's basically putting their hand on the rudder and steering it. I can't help but say that, you know, without this position being filled or with someone of the competence level that we need, we suffer for it financially, because things aren't just getting done as, as probably, not only efficiently, but, but as well financially as they could be. We don't have that control. And one other thing in this, and I found it of interest, is this Esri Tapestry Segment area profile that you sent us.
Oh, yes.
I was wondering, I know it's kinda cold, but I was wondering if you could comment to us and maybe dedicate a session to this, because it talks about demographics, basically in a pretty well-granulated form. It's, it was kind of an awakening here for me to see some of this, I'm gonna call them classifications, that where we fit is a little bit, I'm gonna say, lower on the end of the spectrum than I thought we were.
Yeah. In fact, maybe, maybe I can put something together for next week, along with the other presentations, and just run through it pretty quickly.
I think it would be of interest to know, because this is basically, tells us who we got here in the city, and it really puts a focus on typically what their needs and wants are. So I think that focusing in on our demographic is key to the success of the city as it is.
Anything else, Counsel? Do we have a request for executive session?
I have.
This time on entertaining motion adjourned. Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel Greeney. Clerk, give your call to roll.
Counsel Greeney?
Yes.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. We're adjourned to next week.
Aye. We're adjourned until next week.[623.54]